All right, let me go ahead and convene this regular meeting of the school board. I want to say thank you to our audience members who are here for business tonight. Typically, we do not do our organizational meeting, which is really a pomp and circumstance meeting, as you could tell, on a night that we have a regular business meeting. Because of the Thanksgiving holidays, we were compelled to do it in this fashion. But I know there are a number of you who have been here for quite a while this evening, so thank you for your patience. I would ask at this time for the courteous courtesy of the audience and board members, please silence your cellphones. We've already done a pledge in a moment of silence, so we're not going to do another one tonight. And in the interest of time, we've done away with the strategic plan update tonight. Let me make a couple of preliminary business announcements. Any individual here tonight with us who would like to address an item on the consent or the non-consent agenda may do so by completing an appropriate yellow form. I have a number of them already, such as this, at the board table. You can get this form from Mrs. McGill. She's at the far left-hand side of the dais. I will call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. You will have three minutes to address the board. We would ask that you keep it professional, of course. One thing that I've come to announcing at the outset of meetings, this is, and I think it probably begs the obvious, but this is a formal government proceeding, no different than a legislative committee meeting, or no different than a county commission, or a city council meeting. That is, if you sign up to speak before the board tonight, you are here to give testimony. And I know I speak for the entire board when I say we are very, very eager to hear your testimony. But it is not a dialogue, it is not a debate, it's not an opportunity to question the board members. If they want to ask you questions, they may. Otherwise, once your three minutes are up, then we need to move on to the next speaker. If you have any scheduling constraints, please let Mrs. McGill know, and if possible, we'll try to accommodate you. Lastly, I will point out that the board members, we have a monitor here in front of us, up here on the dais, hidden by the top shelf, so if there is a presentation going on over our head, or if you have PowerPoint or overhead or anything of that nature, and we're not turned around looking at it, we're not being rude and ignoring you. We're watching the same thing you're watching on the overhead monitor, on the overhead screen on a monitor in front of us. At this time, Ms. McGill, let me have you call the roll, and then we'll go into the introduction of the newly appointed administrators.
Ms. Gordon.
I'm here.
Ms. Bell.
Ms. Roach.
Here.
Ms. Caddell.
Here.
Ms. Flynn.
Here.
Chair Sablett.
Here.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Gould.
Okay. At this time, let me turn it over to you Superintendent Jenkins to recognize our newly appointed administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several tonight. First of all, I'd like to introduce Raquel Flores, who was a resource teacher at Ventura Elementary School. She will be our new assistant principal at Oakshire Elementary School.
I would like to thank all the school board members, especially Rick Roach, Dr. Jenkins, and Dr. Jara. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I also want to thank Dr. Lawson and John Ruzick. Thank you for your support. To my principal, Lisa Socks, at Ventura Elementary, thank you for your support. I also want to thank my new principal, Mr. Bond. He's here with me today. Thank you for your support as well. And last but not least, I want to thank my family, my husband, David, which he stepped aside with my little one, Angel, Isabel, my daughter, and Jara. Thank you for always believing in me. Good evening.
Certainly, our regards go to Angel and your husband. He was so patient, he tried to make it, so I give him our best as well. Next, we have Teresa Stafford-Washington, instructional support teacher, career in technical education. She will be the new interim assistant director at Mid-Florida Tech.
Good evening. First, I would like to give honor to God. I would love to thank Mr. Sablett, Mrs. Flynn, Superintendent Barbara Jenkins, Dr. Jara, and the school board members for your leadership and compassion you have for all of Orange County, and for affording me this opportunity. With much thanks to Associate Superintendent Janet Adair, and my former senior director, Mrs. Anita Gantz, for your guidance and love you have for career in technical education community. To Mrs. Adalina Brand, I am humbled and grateful to be on this position and look forward to serve in this capacity. My journey of a thousand miles began with one step, with principalship and trust by Dr. Clara Walters, Dr. James Lawson, Dr. Lane Scott, and Mr. Reggie Forbes, and Mr. Raf Johnson. And my friends, I thank you for cheering me along the way. Lastly, my family, for your love and endearing support. Thank you.
Latonya Brown was senior administrator, specialized student support, and she will be the new principal at Cypress Park Elementary School.
Greetings, everyone. I'm honored for the opportunity to continue to provide a quality education for our students of Orange County Public Schools at Cypress Park Elementary as the principal. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Barbara Jenkins, Superintendent, Dr. Jara, Dr. Lawson. I'm missing some people. Of course, John Ruzick, as well as my immediate past supervisor, Dr. Thompson, and her wisdom, her leadership, and also a couple of my past team members. And also, lastly but not least, my family here. We have a couple of retired educators. First standing with my grandfather, Mr. William Rackert. And then, the rest of my family members, they can just wave. But my mom, she drove. Oh, she's gonna stand. Mother-in-law, Myra, my dad, William Walthar, my stepmom, and my husband, and my two sons over there, so I thank them for their continued support. Thank you.
Dr. Sandra Harwell was instructional support teacher at Orlando Tech. She will be the assistant director for Orlando Tech.
Thank you very much. And I do want to thank the entire board for the support that you've shown to all of us. We certainly appreciate everything that you do for us. I'd like to thank Dr. Jenkins. I'd like to thank Mrs. Adair, who has believed in me from the very beginning. And I'd like to thank Mr. Heidelberg. But thank you very much for this opportunity. I look forward to many, many years with Orange County Public Schools.
Jane Lacheko, senior administrator at Westside Tech, will be the assistant director at Winter Park Tech.
Thank you, Superintendent, school board. I'd also like to thank Janet Adair and the tech center directors. A colleague that's with me here tonight, Andrew Jenkins. Also like to thank a teacher that's joining me tonight, who's a veteran teacher in career in technical education, Pat Nicholson, 32 years, I think. She's helped hundreds and hundreds of students do what all the teachers do in career and technical ed, achieve their industry certification, and certificates, and careers, and have a positive impact in the community of Orange County. Thank you.
Dr. James Zink, instructional support teacher at Mid-Florida Tech, will be the assistant director at Mid-Florida Tech.
I'd like to thank the board, all the board members. I'd like to thank Dr. Jenkins, Superintendent. I'd also like to thank Dr. Jara and Janet Adair, Associate Superintendent, for her support. I'd also like to thank Addie Brand, who is the senior director of Mid-Florida Tech. And finally, I'd like to thank my wife, of many, many years, who has stood behind me and supported me in anything that I wanted to do. Thank you.
Lastly, we have Dr. Felicia Boyd, counselor at Orlando Tech, will be assistant director at Mid-Florida Tech.
Thank you, and good evening. I would like to thank Chair Sablett and the board members, Kat Gordon, for her mentorship and leadership. I would like to thank Superintendent Jenkins, Dr. Jenkins. I would like to thank Associate Superintendent Janet Adair for this vote of confidence, and for giving me this opportunity to serve our students and our faculty in Orange County Public Schools. I would like to thank Mr. Heidelberg and Rosa Grant for their leadership, and for believing in me and seeing potential. I would like to thank Ms. Adalina Brand for this opportunity to join the faculty and staff at Mid-Florida Tech. I would like to thank my family, and also, I stand on the shoulders of a lot of educators that believed in me, retired, and that paved the way for my success, such as Royce and Eddie K. Walden, James Chief Wilson and Virginia Wilson, Calvin and Johnny Lang, and my parents that served in Orange County Public Schools. I am a graduate of Orange County Public Schools, therefore, OCPS certainly means success. Thank you. I'm excited for this opportunity and glad to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Jenkins. Mr. Roach.
Raquel, welcome to Oakshire Elementary. That's a fabulous school, and Principal Bond is a fabulous leader. He's gonna take you to the promised land. And I tell you too, Latonya, you're taking over an incredible institution in the TAF community, let me tell you. It's a very important institution for them, and I'm sure you're gonna do fine. I've heard wonderful things about you already, so good luck to you, too.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, I want to thank, well, it's a little surprising for me for some of the technical appointments, but I do know about Dr. Felicia's, so I'm very proud of her. She's an Orange County Public School student, as she stated. Went out to earn her doctorate degree, a community leader. She's been surrounded by great educators, and I'm really gonna miss her at Orlando Tech. But she's still in District 5, so we're glad to have her because she's done so much at Orlando Tech to boost that, always say, along with JoJo over there, and what a great job they do. But I'm gonna look forward to working with you, Dr. Felicia, at Mid-Florida, and I welcome all of the others. And I wish that they would let me know, so I'll know who's coming in the future. Thank you for the record.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Well, on behalf of the board, I just want to congratulate all of our newly appointed administrators. You know, recently, I asked what percentage of our teachers ever become administrators, and I believe the number was fewer than 4%. And it occurred to me that when one of our teachers becomes an administrator, it says something very, very important that you and your family members should know. It sends a message that this board, and this superintendent, and her senior administrative staff, trust you. They trust you with the education of the children in this community, they trust your judgment, they trust your wisdom. And to me, there is no higher praise than to be told how much we trust you. I want to allow you to leave at this point, but before we do, I would be remiss in not asking these young children, who are under 12 up here, anybody under 12 who has sat through all this, stand up and take a bow so we can recognize you. You guys are wonderful. I always say, half jokingly, that these kids deserve an ice cream, but tonight, I'm fully serious. They deserve an ice cream sitting through this tonight. So with that, if our newly appointed administrators would like to take a moment to filter out, you're welcome to stay if you want to watch the sausage be made, but I have a feeling you have school tomorrow. So thank you for coming, and congratulations. Do you have a Kleenex? Oops. Do you have a Kleenex? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a sort of a procedural question. We didn't have the pre-agenda meeting to ask questions, so before we approve the agenda and everything, will we have an opportunity to ask a question?
Definitely, definitely. In fact, let's do it right now, because I was, before we do that, let me go through the litany of asking. Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are, Mr. Chairman, under Section 3. 3.01 has been withdrawn, that is, Policy JB. 3.02 has been withdrawn, that is, Policy GBA. 3.03 has been withdrawn, that is, Policy ADD. All of those will be brought back to the board at a later time.
Thank you, Superintendent Jenkins. Before I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, Ms. Flynn, let me recognize you. Do you have questions about the agenda, or anything you'd like to change?
I do. For, Mr. Chairman, can I address the superintendent? For 7.03, the request approval of the Contract for Renaissance Charter School at Goldenrod, is that the current one? Or is that the one?
We lost that.
Right, but at Goldenrod, that location confused me.
Ms. Flynn, let me have Dr. Berner speak to your question.
Okay.
When a charter school applies, you'd have to go back two years. This was the charter school Renaissance that applied. When they applied, they were at Goldenrod. Their site is yet to be determined, though board members are aware of the possibility of them settling on the western side of town. If that comes to fruition, then they would obviously have to change their applicant name, but a contract is always brought to you as how they applied.
Okay, so this would be the additional one to the one that's overall for Valencia?
That's correct. This is the application that you denied, that the Charter Appeals Commission overruled, and the state board told us to open. We came back to you to decide if you wanted to pursue further legal action. You did not. The reason why it's been delayed is the contract had to go into arbitration with the management company. When we settled the issues between the applicant and the management company, and got the provisions in our contract that you require, it's now prepared to come forward to all of you.
Okay, so it's, I just wanted to make sure it was a different one.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you.
Ms. Caddell.
Mr., I'm sorry. When you say the requirements that we require, is that the things that the chairman always goes over?
It's not just the chairman, what we affectionately refer to as the chairman's provisions, but it's also the other issues we look for regarding to ensure that we have governance and the correct standards in our contract to make sure we can have a school comply, not only with the state statute, but the expectations of Orange County.
So when we went to arbitration on that, I'm assuming that was on the contract?
I apologize. Mr. Paul Marini has just corrected me. It's mediation, not arbitration. I apologize.
Okay, when we went to mediation, did they agree to the change of principal and all of those things? And that was, we got that in the contract?
Yes, ma'am. The contract that's, that is part of this agenda, it has all the provisions that you would expect. That's why we brought it forward to you.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Berner, Mr. Paul Marini, thank you for that. Seriously, those contractual provisions, as you know, are important to me, and I think they're important to a lot of members of this board. And frankly, I hope that maybe we're getting someone in the state to sit up and take notice that you can negotiate some performance measures in charter contracts, and hopefully they'll stick.
I also think the headline news of what's happened with some of the charters has also helped people sit up and say, you know, "We can't do this anymore." So hopefully, part of the tide is changing.
All right. We are now on a motion to adopt the agenda as requested by the superintendent. Can I take that motion? It's been moved by Ms. Caddell. It's been seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Saying none. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. I'll oppose nay, should the agenda adopted. All right, we are now, the three items under public hearings have been withdrawn, of course, and carried over to the next board meeting. We are now on the consent agenda. This week, or in this agenda, we are designating this week as National School Psychology Week. And we have some of our school psychologists with us here tonight. Can we have them all stand and let us recognize you collectively? And I especially want to thank you, because it's certainly our great privilege and pleasure to recognize National School Psychology Week, but I think it's almost Freudian that you would sit through this long a meeting for a one week of recognition, so thank you for that. I believe that Ms. Mary Bridges and Mr. Aguirre may make a few comments. Ms. Bridges, welcome. Just Mary? Okay. We finally lost him.
Yes, we did.
What does that say in Freudian psychology? Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Sablett, past Vice Chairman Flynn, and new Vice Chairman Moore, board members, and Superintendent Jenkins. My name is Mary Bridges, and I'm the ESE Director of Psychological and Social Services. I have the privilege of supervising more than 90 school psychologists in this district, serving all district and charter schools in Orange County. I want to take this moment to thank you for recognizing these school psychologists and all the work they do for Orange County Public Schools. The role of a school psychologist has changed tremendously in the past few years. They have gone from being experts in psychology, primarily evaluating students, to having a major role in each school's leadership team. School psychologists are now not only qualified experts in psychology, but also experts in identifying students as soon as any academic or behavioral concerns arise. They work with the schools to create and implement interventions at the first sign a student is struggling, and then they use data to progress monitor each student until the correct interventions are found. They are now training teachers and school teams on the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, which research has shown is the best way to help all students succeed academically. This year, they are working closely with our struggling schools, as well as supervising the screening of all second-grade students in Title I schools to identify possible gifted students. In addition, they, along with our social workers, comprise the crisis management teams that are sent to any schools when there's a crisis situation. I work with an amazing group of dedicated professionals that work tirelessly to make sure every student in Orange County Public Schools has access to the best, most appropriate education available. I encourage anyone that works in a setting with a school psychologist to take a moment to say thank you for supporting the students, teachers, administrators, and community. Thank you, and thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Bridges. Mr. Roach.
I just wanted to thank all of you for coming down tonight. These are really smart people. They really are. School psychologists are very, very smart, and schools depend on them more than you know. This is where Mr. Blocker got his start, and that's how I first met him, but they are very, very valuable in our help with servicing kids, and getting them identified, and getting the proper services to them very quickly. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate them, and as a member of the counseling family, how much we work with them side by side. And we even get a lot of counseling tips from these people. They're very, very sharp people, so thanks for coming tonight. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Ms. Caddell.
Well, and in my years of service, unfortunately, I have had the opportunity to lose a teacher, to lose more than one student, and to go to schools where crisis things have happened. And I am in awe of what you do for grieving families and grieving teachers, and I've been there more than once. I think I've had five or six opportunities in my years to go deal with a tragedy. And whenever I hear the crisis team is going in, I know that that school is in great hands, because if you are in a situation where you lose someone, not only is the crisis team there, but the area soup's are there, all supporting one another, that this is, this is a school district that cares immensely. When tragedy strikes one of my families, and so my hats are off to all of you, because every time I've had to deal with one of these situations, the services you provide are phenomenal. So thanks for what you do each and every day.
Thank you, Ms. Caddell. That was very, very well said. On behalf of the board, thank you very, very much for all your service to all our students. I know my family has been able to utilize the school psychologists, and I've always been so impressed every time I've met any one of you. And so, Mary, thank you for your leadership of the department. And with that, you're welcome to stick around as well, but you probably have school tomorrow, so thank you for coming down tonight. Just for the sake of the record, I want to make it clear, we are actually now on a agenda item, former agenda item 16.01. Mr. Rodriguez, is he around? Is there any reason I can't just change the number of the agenda items to reflect the order I took them up in? Because I made that 16.01 a matter of JB. Okay, we're now on what was 16.01, which will now be 16.02. It's Charter School Application for Somerset Virtual Academy. Dr. Jenkins, will this be being handled by Dr. Berner? Dr. Berner.
At the risk of making sure that we move with all deliberate speed this evening, we're going to change a little bit of our procedure, and only read the background and information regarding our process one time. As you're well aware, we currently have 33 operating charter schools under contracts with Orange County. Each year, charter school applicants submit a proposal or an application to the school board for review on or before August 1st. Prior to submitting an application, the applicant always has the opportunity to submit a draft application to the staff for review. All charter school applicants are held to the same standards, and all approvals or recommendations for approval or denial are based upon the requirements set forth in the Florida statutes 1002.33, and in the case of virtual schools, 1002.45. These statutes provide school districts with the guidance and the legal responsibilities for authorizing charter schools, and clearly states the guiding principles and purposes of those schools. Your OCPS evaluation process consists of review of the application using the Florida Department of Education's Charter School Model Application Instruments. A review of the committee and our legal team, as well as a staff interview with the Board of Directors, and a work session with the school board members of Orange County are part of the process. In each case, with all three applicants tonight, Somerset Virtual, Eagle Air, and Odyssey, those steps in the process were followed. Specifically to Somerset Virtual, based upon that review process, and with the opinion of our legal department, there is sufficient reason we believe that Somerset Virtual Academy has not successfully met all the requirements of the charter school application process as outlined in the Florida statutes 1002.33 and 1002.45. The statute's purpose and required application components necessary to properly administer and operate a charter school benefiting all students have not been adequately addressed. These factors are too great to reasonably recommend acceptance of the proposal at this time, specifically the following were the most significant elements of statutory purpose that the staff has provided to the superintendent, and therefore, her recommendation to you. The mission-guiding principles-and-purpose section partially met the standard. The target-population-student-body section did not meet the standard. The education-program design, the curriculum plan, the exceptional-student section, the governance section, and management section, all partially met the standard. The educational-service provider, the employment section, the student-recruitment-and-enrollment section, the budget section, and finally, the fiscal, I'm sorry, the financial-management-and-oversight sections, all partially met the standard. Therefore, the applicant Somerset Virtual is encouraged to further refine the application, address the outstanding issues, and certainly is welcome to submit again in the 2013 cycle. Therefore, the recommended resolution to you as a board this evening from the superintendent is a denial of the charter school application for Somerset Virtual Academy.
All right, thank you, Dr. Berner. Don't believe I have any speakers on this. Superintendent's recommendation to deny the Somerset Virtual Academy application, is that correct, Ms. McGill? Okay. Board members' questions? Comments? Okay. Mrs. Robinson.
[inaudible]
Yes. Go ahead.
I move that we support the superintendent's recommendation to deny charter school application for Somerset Virtual Academy.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Caddell. I just punched my own butt, and I just want to make a brief comment. I'm gonna share with you, board members, and for the representatives from Somerset here, this is a tough one for me, and I mean that sincerely. I support the superintendent's recommendation. I think the basis for the recommendation are well-founded. I think ultimately, we as a board are going to have to face up to the fact that we are going to have competing virtual school providers in this county. And the reason it is a tough one for me is because I think the Somerset chain of schools is a very, very high-quality chain of charter schools. And I think they've proven that with their overall record in this state, which I've spoken of many, many times. with their overall record in this state, which I’ve spoken of many, many times. I will suggest this, and I think you already know this from the hearing on your charter application. We have had some problems here in Orange County Public Schools, as other school districts have had with their charter operators. And if there’s one thing that they seem to have in common, each of the failed charters that we’ve had here in Orange County, it’s the lack of local board oversight, or it’s improper local board oversight. So I fully expect to see you all back next year with an application, probably for a virtual school again. I just hope at that time that you will come to the table with a full local board of local citizens that we can hold accountable for the operation of that charter school. So with that, Ms. Moore, did you want to add anything before we vote on this?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to concur with that because certainly, this brand of charter school is certainly at the top, you know, if we had to rate all of them. But we’re just particularly at a juncture after what we’ve just gone through with a local charter, very concerned, and we have to answer to our constituents. And I just have many members in my community who cannot understand why this Board cannot hold Board members accountable. And I know that the state statute was changed, I believe, two years ago to say, and I fought that tooth and nail, I was in Tallahassee, that we want to have Board, local Board members because they’re going to be more responsive to the taxpayer. This money is, you know, being funded by local Orange County taxpayers. They live here. They’re invested in our people. So for me personally, I know it’s not a legal reason, there are other legal reasons, but for me personally, I’m having a very, very hard time answering to my constituents when I don’t have enough local Board members who I see the whites of their eyes in that session. So I think you guys are one of the best charter outfits there is in the state. Next time, find us some more Orange County Board members and bring them to the meeting, and my vote might be different next time. And so that’s, and again, I’ve got to be that way based on what my constituents are sharing with me here. So really, that’s in essence what you said, but I wanted to reiterate that point.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Cadel.
Well, and I want to ditto that, too. I’m tired of going to the car wash and running into my constituents and saying, “What do you mean you can’t hold that charter board accountable?” If it was people who were going, who people knew they were on the Board, who were going to the grocery stores and to the car washes and the places, that people keep asking us, we have to at some point be able to say, “This person lives in Orange County, or these five people live in Orange County and they’re working with this other Board,” but people don’t understand. It is not something that is clear to the public that charter schools are, their Board of Directors is responsible, and we get email complaints about what’s going on at charter schools, and we can’t do anything. All we can do is explain to them that you have to go back to that Board of Directors. So I just want to ditto the same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. All right, seeing no further speakers, the motion has been made to support the Superintendent’s recommendation to deny the charter school application for Somerset Virtual Academy. Does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. All right, we’re now on what is now 16.03, which is Eagle Aerospace Military Academy’s Charter School Application. It’s Dr. Bernair.
Mr. Chairman, School Board Members, Dr. Jenkins. Just as a quick reminder, again, we have the background and we have the process of application review, representative interview, and a founding board presentation and a work session. All those were taken care of. Keep in mind, as we look at a model application, in this particular case, this is a brick-and-mortar application. 1002.45 is no longer applicable. We are only judging this based upon the standards outlined in 1002.33. And in cases of all, you can rate them as meeting the standard, partially meeting the standard, or not meeting the standard. In the case of Eagle Aerospace, the summary is based upon the complete review process. There is sufficient reason to believe that Eagle Aerospace Military Academy has not successfully met the requirements of the charter application process as outlined in Florida statute. The statute’s purpose and required application components necessary to properly administer and operate a charter school benefiting all students has not been adequately addressed. These factors are too great at this time to recommend an acceptance of this proposal. Specifically, the following are the most significant elements of statutory purpose and/or charter development criteria necessary for approval, which are inadequate. The Mission Guiding Principles and Purpose Section partially meets the standard. The Target Student Population and Student Body partially meets the standard. The Education Program Design does not meet statutory standard. The Curriculum Plan Section does not meet the standard. The Student Performance Assessment and Evaluation Section does not meet the standard. Exceptional Education Student Section does not meet the standard. And we do need to get into the record, it’s very important to make sure we make the comment, that the application actually stated under this section, “As long as the theme and spirit of our school is not impaired, we will accept some disability students.” This is of clear violation of IDEA, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, and other related ESE statutes. The English Language Learner Section does not meet the standard. The School Discipline and Climate Section partially met the standard. The Governance Section partially met the standard. The Management Section partially met the standard. The Employment Section partially met the standard. The Student Recruitment and Enrollment Section partially met the standard. The Budget Section did not meet the standard. Again, we are missing a startup budget in this section, and we are missing pieces of the required five-year budget in order to determine the financial viability of this application. The Fiscal Management and Oversight Section partially meets the standard, and the Action Plan partially met the standard. Therefore, at this time, we feel that it would best behoove the applicant to reapply in the 2013 application cycle, and therefore, the recommendation provided to you by the Superintendent from staff recommendation is denial of the charter school application for Eagle Aerospace.
Thank you, Dr. Bernair. Ms. Moore. Oh, I’m sorry, have, do you want to go before the speakers or after them? I have two speakers on this application. Okay. That’s what I would prefer. Thank you. We have two speakers this evening on this application. We have Mr. Jerry Waller and Ms. Alana Kearney. Mr. Waller, you can go whichever order you’d like, and you know the drill, name and address to start, sir, and then you’ll have three minutes to address the Board.
Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and Chairman Sablet and School Board Members, my name is Jerry Waller. I live at 130 Glendale Drive, Longwood, Florida, 32750, and my family, immediate family, has been here, extended family since about 1860, when it was one county. So I’m a local. I appreciated all your questions from last time, and I may answer, try to answer some of those extended questions you may have tonight, hopefully if you have them for me. But we have an exciting opportunity with Eagle Aerospace Military Academy, and that is to bring an air force entity back into central Florida, which disappeared in the late 60s. There’s two components to this program. The cadet program, which has been around for 70 years, and our curriculum, which is promoted by Advanced Academics Division of DeVry University. They have three charter schools in Florida now, very successful and compliant with Florida standards. Before I hire their first teacher, I have 30 Florida-certified teachers online to back up that curriculum. I also will hire, at a ratio of 22 to 1, Florida-certified teachers onsite to, this is, by the way, all in the application, to monitor and assess the progress of all the students at the academy. The other exciting news is, and I told you this last time, that Osceola County opened a military school. The first year, this year, they enrolled 280 students. That’s a great indicator of what we can do here. What we can do here a little bit more, though, because they don’t have a cadet program like Civil Air Patrol. What I have is a mom-and-pop school backed up by a trillion-dollar budget air force that can provide activities on the weekends and in the summer to promote aerospace education, leadership, and aviation knowledge. No other charter school has this. I’ve also got indigenous volunteers that have been in this organization, that are screened, that have the equivalent of top-secret clearance, that can support the academy activities on the weekends. Just a tremendous level of support, plus I talked to General Baptiste this morning. He’s the head of the National Center for Simulation. He thought it was a little funny that I don’t have a relationship with him because I have a, part of the school information is on his website, and we’ve been talking for two years about his support of this school. They’re very excited about it, as is the local aerospace community. We’re the third-largest aerospace community in the United States. Lockheed Martin, last time I talked to Lockheed, I got the equivalent of $100,000 with office furniture from them, loaded on an Army flatbed. We went right next to Oak Ridge High School on a YMCA annex building, and had a great squadron headquarters there with. So I can get resources. This is a very important program. Let’s not kick the can down the road another two years for opening. I request you look at the information I submitted to you by email and our answers, and I’ll be glad to answer any of your questions here right now. We can discuss this further before you make a vote.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Waller.
Thank you.
All right, I have Ms. Alana Kearney. Ms. Kearney, welcome. You could begin, ma’am, by saying your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alana Kearney. My address is 4606 Urban Court, Orlando, Florida, 32810. I am a disabled veteran who has served my country proudly. Being a soldier is a sacrifice we make for our children to have the opportunities open to them. It is the inheritance of these types of freedoms we leave our children’s children to be able to solve the big mess that was created before them so they don’t have a hopeless future to look towards. As a mother, we always want the best for our children. As a single parent, that can be difficult. However, I know nothing is impossible. As a gifted person who was suppressed by being a part of a system that did not provide me the avenues for children to strive towards their dreams, my motivation became difficult being in a classroom frustrated because I was ready for more. A statement I hold dear made by Frederick Douglass says, “It is easier to raise strong men than to repair broken men.” I know my son is special, and he is in love with things other than what society considers the norm, like sports and video games. He enjoys fishing and chess. He loves science, math, and airplanes. I began noticing at a very young age that my son was into aircrafts, and he could recognize them without even seeing them, but just by their sounds. I was very excited when my son took the initiative of researching flight schools, calling them, and saving the money to take his first lessons during this past summer. He has amazed pilots by the questions he asks and the knowledge that he knows by the breakdown of an airplane’s engine. I now homeschool with the hope of being my children’s number-one cheerleader in their dream come true. I am not eligible for government scholarships because I homeschool. My income is limited and fixed. I would like my children in an environment where they are motivated to learn and success is achievable. They can see that achievement by being in a school that gives them the strong foundation of what they are dreaming of, and to know that it is and can be made real. Then they will have the confidence to be who they are and live happy wholesome lives. There are so many things that I can brag about on my son. It would take you taking the time to see and to see him, to talk, talking with him, to see why I believe this school is so needed. It is because of unique children like my son is worth it. And not only that, you can’t take a fish out of the water and tell it it has to learn how to fly. My son is an eagle, and he deserves to learn how to fly and not be taught to swim when that is not what he’s interested in. And so I believe that would be an environment best served for him.
Thank you, Ms. Kearney. All right. Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, I have just a couple of questions, first for Dr. Bernair and then for Mr. Waller. Dr. Bernair, my question to you is, this type of charter with the unique nature that it is and the passion the local Board is what we prefer to have, but this is the second time that we’ve had this application. Can you explain to me what, what’s the word I’m looking for? Options, training, services, when you have someone like this, and we’ve had a previous application that was deficient in several areas, what you offer to help applicants remediate the deficiencies?
If an application is denied, or even in the case of an approval where we have particular issues, we certainly work with the applicant, but let’s stick with the denial question since that is the one you’re asking about. In the case last year where Eagle Air was denied, they were provided information not only from my office, but from our legal attorneys regarding the deficiencies in their application. While some of them were addressed, they did not address all of them. In addition, our staff provides the opportunity prior to the August 1st deadline to have the applications submitted for our review. When we read those, we read them again, just like we read them on August 1st or August 2nd when we receive them, and we provide extensive feedback to the applicant of what they would need to correct prior to submitting on August 1st. This application did not come to us for that previous review. So this application came back in a second time with some of the same statutory reasons that you denied it last year, for the same purposes and causes.
All right. Thank you. If my remaining time, I’d like to address that question to Mr. Waller, if it would be right. Mr. Chair, would you please come?
Mr. Waller, would you come up to the lectern, please?
Mr. Waller, I love your passion. You want to be in my community, and I know, I see those, are we to see boys at the football games, all 40 of them every game, so I know you have a constituency in District 7. Help me understand why we’re here two years later, and, you know, why you haven’t worked more closely with Dr. Mir, and why we can’t get some of these deficiencies repaired.
Okay. The corrections from last year pretty much were made, and we have a new set of things on here, some of which I dispute, but I don’t, we don’t have time here to go over every single item. What I can tell you about the school staff is that Roger Gardner is award-winning principal, and that I have-
Mr. Chair, just a second. Can I just redirect, Mr. Waller?
Yeah, sure.
I don’t mean to interrupt you because I love your passion and everything. I’m trying to understand, if I heard correctly, Dr. Bernier indicated that you had the opportunity to bring this in months ahead of time and work with the staff to correct the issues under their guidance, and he said you didn’t.
Well, I can answer that by saying that I tried my best to correct with consultation with my Board the 40 or so items from last time. Now, the list is shorter this time, but I did make a mistake on printing the five-year budget, and there were two items brought up in review with Mr. Bernier at the time our application was already in. It was the five-year budget and the, an item about the arbitration clause and the advanced academics contract. Those were the two things. Then I was not emailed this, which is the long list of things that came about between now and the time you, we have this meeting, but I do dispute some of those items. I feel like there’s, they’re moving the goalposts because we went to a review at Osceola, and there were some items there, and we were turned down at Osceola on some items. But other items are differing opinions on what we complied with and what we didn’t. So this is all part of, this is all part of opinion of the reviewer, and I’ve tried my best to comply.
All right. Thank you. I have one, thank you very much.
Sure.
Dr. Bernair, I just have one follow-up because I’ve got about 30 seconds.
Yes, ma’am.
Can you tell me, because I went to one of these seminars back in 1999, are there additional seminars at the- seminars that the state's choice office offers to help applicants get their paperwork and their program of work in order in addition to what you offer here locally?
Without giving, without sounding like I'm dodging the question, I do not have a definitive answer. It's unusual for charter school authorizers to get the same information that charter school applicants receive. It may be quite possible that there's additional support from the DOE regarding an application, but I have not seen any emails out of the charter school listserv or from Adam Miller or Mike Coy specifically offering that opportunity. They usually see it as a local issue that's going to be decided locally and encourage the applicant to work with the local school district.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Roach.
It is, it's so unusual to have a charter school come that's truly innovative. And so, I still maintain my enthusiasm for this school, but I think the word innovative brings a certain word or two with it, and that's risk. You have to take risks when you're innovative because you're kind of one of a kind. I think that there's... I was satisfied with your answers that I read in this particular document, and I think that this particular school has two or three things that are critical to me. As an old high school ninth-grade counselor, I have to tell you, fellow board members, when I had my 500 caseload students, ninth graders, and Ms. Chaffin had her 500 ninth-grade caseload students, between the two Os, we had 100 kids in ninth grade that didn't have a chance, didn't have a chance. Within the nine weeks, they had already buried themselves with a GPA, attendance problems. They're just... Now, did that happen in ninth grade? No, it didn't happen in ninth grade. It happened way before they got to ninth grade. It happened sixth, seventh, eighth grade. This school picks them up in sixth grade. That's the most exciting thing to me is not every sixth grader will jump on this, but a lot of kids we can take and we can probably save them with a school like this. It has a culture that's second to none. The military culture is unique in itself. Kids get into that. It offers a career on the other end. If they're successful on the 12th grade, these kids can get a career in the military. And this is the name, this is what I think really makes it exciting for me and very similar to another charter school that we have, is Innovative. The page to me that's missing here, the page that's missing is the page that's got heart and soul written all over it, but it's not in its packet. But that's where, that's what calls out to me with this school. This school has got a heart. It's got a soul that kids can attach themselves to, and many of the others, I hate to say it, are just too cookie-cutter-like to me, and they probably have a better application according to Chris Bernier. But I would say this, and Mrs. Cadel brought it up, and it was really kind of a fond memory, but about this time, eight years ago or nine years ago, probably about this time of night, we were debating hotly...
I think it was real close.
We were debating hotly an innovative charter school that promised to grab kids who were flailing in the 10th grade and graduate them and promised them a job. And I'm telling you, Jason Powell at the time, I guess I can call his name, was our Chris Bernier at that point, and he denied it. And he gave a number of reasons why it was denied, statutorily, partially this, partially that, but it had enough heart and soul into it that we had a debate about it. But out of all the complaints, I remember vividly one of the board members saying that the curriculum was not diversified, differentiated. That was it. It wasn't differentiated curriculum. And I guess it was too late at night, and I said, "Here's the differentiation. It's called work. The kids get a job, and when you have a job, all of a sudden algebra doesn't look so hard anymore. And the English assignments aren't too bad because I've got a job and I'm making money." That's the difference. This kind of school offers that kind of edge for a lot of kids, and I think that we have an opportunity to take an innovative program that's coming with some risks involved and give them a chance. This is the second year. He's worked hard. I think, I think he was honest. I tried. I did the best I could to meet him, but I don't think it's that far-fetched, and it certainly isn't far-fetched as it was eight years ago. And that, that particular vote was a 4-3 vote. It almost failed, but we had enough of us that said, "Let's give the doggone thing a run and see what happens." But if you're not willing to do that, it's hard to get innovation coming in. It's easier probably to have a cookie-cutter school that you can go up to the state and have them do it for $500, and they do it for you, and it's 350 pages long and doesn't have any errors in it. But that's the deal. We've got a local company. It's homegrown, mom and pop, unique opportunity, grabs the kids at sixth grade, gives them a job, and they get to wear a uniform, for goodness sakes, like this young man right here. Thank you for coming out tonight. You were, you're a good prop for me to point to. So, I just, I don't have any hesitation. I would give them a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think your concept about the cadet influence and the program is great. I think that is the innovation. But what I do have is I don't have the confidence in the other part of the school, the academics. I think, Mr. Roach, when you said maybe it needs a better application, for me, it needs an application that's going to instill confidence in the program. I think there's an over-reliance on the advanced academic online learning program. The teachers are based out of state. Those teachers, I know you would have some in the classroom, but here's, here's one thing, and I have been consistent about this with other charters, your evaluation program for the off-site teachers is not there. And I did read your email, and you said, "Well, that's because the teachers don't work for us. They work for the..."
DeVry.
Yeah. What do they, DeVry University, or they work for academics, advanced academics. You know, they might be in Oklahoma, who knows? But I think every teacher that teaches one of our students has to fall under the Senate Bill 736. I don't think it's right for some to have to adhere to it and others that not, that they don't. So, that has, that's a big problem. I think also, when you talked about evaluating student progress, you said, "Well, they go at their own speed because of the online capability," and I think that's great if the students are accelerated. I think it's problematic if they're not because we have to have those students reach those benchmarks so they can do well on their FCAT. So, I think your concept is good. I would like to see it come back with a stronger curriculum on the core standard side, not the cadet side, but the, you know, the core academics. So, I would encourage you to come back with an even stronger program than you have now and really concentrate on those areas that have to do with the core curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. Ms. Flynn. Ms. Cadel.
This is the hardest thing for me to say, and I left here last time enthusiastic that this could be a good program, but in our phone conversation, in your response, I don't see a willingness to work with our school choice office. And Mrs. Moore asked you about why you didn't avail yourself to our school choice office. I'm willing to take a chance, but I need to see that there is some willingness to work. And I was very concerned about the tone about one of our employees, and that really and truly has put this at jeopardy for me. And I pulled out of here the last time going, "You know, maybe I'm willing to do that and risk the legal ramifications." But I can tell you, reading your response and the conversation I had, it just raised a whole bunch of concerns, and I have got to be convinced that if we take a chance, that there's a willingness to work with us. And I agree with Ms. Flynn. I have no doubt that the Civil Air Patrol portion of this is really, really good, but we have to educate children. I mean, that is the core mission of public schools, and you will be a public school. And I, you know, I have heard you say that DeVry, you know, they now have this, but I've got to see it in writing because all of the presentations have really talked about the Civil Air Patrol. You don't need to convince me on that, but I need to be convinced that the academics are happening. And so, this is a real tough one for me because I, last night, I've already told everyone upstairs, I could not fall asleep last night, and my brain would not turn off. And this was one of the things that kept me up until 1:30 last night because I was trying to raise, I was trying to figure out how much of a gamble I was willing to take. And it has bothered me immensely some of the tone that has happened since you, since you came and gave us your presentation. So, I can tell you that I am very conflicted on this, and I am not sure at this point that I can take that gamble. And when I pulled out of here two weeks ago, I was pretty close to saying, you know, "I want to make a gamble." So, you know, I'm going to listen to the rest of the board members, but I just want you to know what my concerns are, and it's very, very hard to sit here publicly and state what I stated. And if you were here when the new board, when Mrs. Gould came on and when I talked about Mrs. Bell, these are hard decisions. The decision that we just made on that student was a very hard decision, and this is very, very hard, but we have got to make sure that we are making the right decision for the people of Orange County because that's who we are responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. All right, board members, I don't have any other speakers lined up to speak on this issue, so at this time, I think a motion would be in order. Someone's going to have to move to either, either that or I'll pass the gavel to either accept or reject the superintendent's recommendation.
I make a motion... Okay. I make a motion that we do not accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay. Can I, can I help, can I, would you indulge me? Let me rephrase that. I think the motion is that we not accept the superintendent's recommendation that we grant a charter to Eagle Aerospace Academy. That's your intention?
That's my intention, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Thank you. All right. Is there a second to that? The motion has been made that we reject the superintendent's recommendation and that we award a charter to Eagle Aerospace Academy. Okay? It's been moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Mr. Roach. All right. Is there any further debate or discussion on that motion? Does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. No. Show that motion failing by a 6-2 vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you.
Two years, I rarely turn to you, but do I need a motion now to accept the superintendent's recommendation in your legal opinion?
Yes, you do.
Okay. I thought we did, or might. Ms. Gordon, would you like to move to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that this board go on record in accepting the superintendent's recommendation for the denial of the charter.
Okay. It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon to accept the superintendent's recommendation and deny the charter to Eagle Aerospace Academy. It's been seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted by 6-2 vote. All right. We are now on 16.03, which is Odyssey Middle School. Dr. Bernier.
Odyssey Charter School, sir.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that transgression on my part.
You know, it never occurred to me till just now, that name confusion. Hmm.
We trust that.
They are. Okay. Thank you.
As the founding principle, Odyssey Middle School, I can assure you I'll work with the founding board should you act tonight to make sure we work with a name change.
Odyssey Charter Prep.
Again, we went through the same background process that we go through all applications. Their application was turned in on time. They went through a representative interview with school choice, and they went through a founding board presentation with the OCPS school board members. At this time, upon the complete review of the process, there's sufficient reason to believe that Odyssey Charter Preparatory Academy has met successfully the statutory requirements of the charter application process outlined in 1002.33. And for the record and for your own edification, keep in mind again, we're talking about a brick-and-mortar charter school. The statute's purpose and required application components necessary to properly administer and operate a charter school benefiting all students has, with some exceptions, been adequately addressed. I know that this issue will come up, and I know I was asked to remind you this evening regarding the work session that was held. This was the work session with the Odyssey Board that was attended by the curriculum resource teacher and not the board members of Odyssey. And I was asked to raise that by both legal and my staff. We wanted to remind you of that situation. That issue is not statutory, but we do believe it's worth mentioning for your consideration this evening.
All right, board members, I don't have any speakers on this application.
Oh, I got mine.
I'm sorry. I thought that was from the last one because I had to reset.
Sorry.
Yeah. I will. Thank you, thank you, Ms... All right.
No, our lights are on. I think I was number one. It showed up number one, but when you said you had no speakers...
Okay.
You meant from the floor and not the board.
Yes. Well, you know, Mrs. Gordon, I'm sorry. I deleted both Ms. Cadel's and yours. Would you mind going after?
Right, and I was number one.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cadel.
Right. I think Ms. Cadel was referring to us, but I believe you were referring to the audience.
Okay. Mrs. Gordon.
Right. I just needed the general counsel to clear the records for us. I believe that there was a concern in reference to the application for Odyssey and the name change. Did we, were we able to work that out for the changing of the name since we already have a school named Odyssey in Orange County? It was a conflict, and I think the chairman had asked for reconsideration of the name at the last work session. The board did.
I'm going to have Mr. Paul Marini or Mr. Bernier, but Mr. Paul Marini is the legal...
Their legal counsel can advise us on that, please.
Mrs. Gordon, they, during the contract negotiations for this, in order to get rid of the confusion that would be created if we had two schools named Odyssey, we will negotiate with them to change the name of the school from what is currently listed on the application to something different in order to get rid of that confusion.
Right. I would be very grateful providing the school is approved tonight, that we not get Odyssey Charter Preparatory Academy confused with the, with the Orange County Public Schools, being that they both are, both would be considered public schools. There could be a grave error made in many ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Cadel.
Move the adoption of the superintendent's recommendation to approve the charter school application for Odyssey Charter Preparatory Academy.
Okay. It's been moved to accept the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a second to that? It's been seconded by Ms. Bell. All right. Did you want to speak on that motion or any further? Okay. I've got two speakers still lined up. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. This is a question for Dr. Bernier. One of the questions I have that I asked was in regard to where they were planning to locate, and at the, at the time, it sounded like the presenter didn't really have a good concept of where east and west was for Orange County. Was that ever determined? Because, you know, I think I'd like us to have a little bit more idea of where charters do go. It helps us plan our own programs and impact that it will have on schools. I think we've seen where...
I understand what you're requesting. The statute does not require a charter to identify its location. I know that at the work session, they spoke about locating in east Orlando, but within the same sentence, they talked about Pine Hills, and I think that's where the confusion of Orlando geography came into question. This is a charter that you have approved once before, and they had trouble locating a site. They were approved unanimously by the board. They went into a year of deferral and could not find the correct site for their green style model. They may have to choose to build this time around, or they may seek a site. Before we come to a final execution of contract, which allows our government planning organization to operate with projection numbers and as well as our people assignment office, they must disclose a final address before you approve a final contract, i.e., the Renaissance contract you approved tonight at Goldenrod. When that address is finally settled, then that contract will come back to you for final approval. So, while we try to press the candidate as much as we can for their location, we, and I would defer to John, we can only press so hard.
Okay. Did any board, their board members show up tonight?
Yes, some of them are here this evening.
Are any of them local? Are you in Orange County?
They're not from Orange. No, ma'am.
Are any of them? Are any of the board?
Not of the founding board.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Moore?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for you. You've really led with these extra issues, performance measures, and it seems like Dr. Bernier's team's doing an exceptionally good job in the negotiations. I was curious to see what the rest of the board thought about, I know that the state, that we cannot turn them down in terms of the number of board members that are local. And I'm going to sound like a broken record because I mentioned this with the first charter tonight, but I do not want to keep going to the grocery store and being hunted down for not keeping charters accountable. And we didn't see any board members, so part of me wants to deny them. But then, as I've been listening, it's a fabulous charter. They're doing a great job in providing. Is there any way to request, you're the lawyer, some language to ensure that we have some local board members that we could see the whites of their eyes and I can have confidence to tell my constituents something about this board? Is there anything we can, I know I'm putting you really on the spot.
Well, I'm, I'm one of a half dozen lawyers in this room and probably the least capable in answering that, but we have one of the most capable, Mr. Paul Marini, who we pay to do this and answer these questions. But may I make a suggestion? And I don't think I've ever done this in two years. I would suggest maybe a board member go up and fill out a speaker card and address this board and answer any questions because there's been a recommendation to approve this application, but there are some concerns here. And I think it would be hoove y'all to have a board member address the board. Mr. Paul Marini, can that type of contractual requirement be put into the negotiations? And I guess a better way of stating it is, is it sustainable?
We can certainly attempt to negotiate it. I think at the end of the day, it would not be sustainable. It would not be something that we would be allowed to turn them down in contract negotiations over. There is no provision in the statute that requires any that board members be local. We can certainly negotiate it if that's your wish, and we can try to voluntarily get it from them. But at the end of the day, if this gets challenged and we go through a mediation and then eventually a DOA hearing on that, I think we would not be successful.
I certainly understand that, but we've been successful on the other three. And I feel like I owe it to the taxpayers to try. I really do. And, you know, I think most of the charter people, they want to be good partners with us. And it's, they understa, this is not an unreasonable request. It doesn't cost money. It just brings comfort to our taxpayers. So, I would hope that they would work with us. And then, we would be aware of who these local board members are and, and, you know, build some relationships with them so we can ensure fiduciary academically every way, the success of the charter. Because we want to be a partner with them, but it's difficult when we don't know who the board members are and none of them are from Orange County. So, I feel, I don't know what the rest of the board feels about that. It's worth a try.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore. I've pushed my button. I agree with Ms. Moore. You know, sometimes you have to push the envelope and, well, I've had two speakers put in cards. Let me, let me go to Mr. Verge or Ms. Ortiz, and you go in whatever order you'd like. But before you get up there, let me make this somewhat easy. And Dr. Bernier, I have a question for you before they get up there or Mr. Paul Marini. Does the statute specify a minimum or a maximum number, I can't talk, forgive me, number of members of a charter school board?
It does not. They obviously, you know, in their articles of incorporation, that they form their corporation based upon that will drive the number. It's an act, it's a submission they provide to us.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, having looked at applications for two years now, it seems like most of our charter applicants have boards between five or six and seven or eight persons. Is that the?
Usually five, five to seven is usually the number. And, you know, some are more expansive than that. There's many as 11. But in terms of how those boards operate, I think how you and the board have conducted work sessions and the specific questions you've asked of boards and got them to verbally commit to you on the record has allowed Mr. Paul Marini and I some, some additional latitude in contractual negotiations.
Mr. Paul Marini, my understanding in response to Ms. Moore's question, and although I don't practice in this area, I have run, I read an awful lot of case law in this area thanks to your assistance in helping you spoon-feeding it to me, is, and tell me if this is a correct statement of the law, okay? And correct me if I'm wrong, of course. I think generally speaking, we can put academic performance requirements into a charter. We may even be stretching the envelope on those, but the courts have ruled that if they're empirically based, based by objective evidence as to the academic welfare of a student, in so many words, we can do that. I think the courts have ruled that we cannot put any limits or restrictions on the financial operations of the school, meaning we can't put limits on teacher salaries, we can't put limits on principal salaries, we can't put limits on lease terms, et cetera, because those are non-empirically based as being in the academic interest of the students. Is that generally correct, Mr. Paul Marini?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it is.
Okay. So, before either Ms. Verge, Mr. Verge or Ms. Ortiz get up, I will tell you, after you speak, one of the questions I'm going to ask you is I'm either going to pass the gavel if another member doesn't make the motion and make a motion that we, well, we have a motion pending on the floor. But I may ask the maker of that motion for a friendly amendment if she'll indulge it, that, that, that we approve this charter application and the superintendent's recommendation, provided however, that a majority of the board are local Orange County citizens. It doesn't have to be all of the board, but a majority. So, that's going to be my amendment to the main motion made if the maker of the main motion will entertain it. So, let me turn it over to our two speakers. Which of you would like to go first? Ms. Ortiz?
Good evening. My name is Constance Ortiz. I'm the founder of Odyssey. I opened the school in, in 1999 and have been with it ever since. And I'm very proud of our accomplishments, having raised millions of dollars to build Florida's first green building and offer a holistic form of education. We wouldn't even consider coming to this county. There doesn't have to be a law for us to have local participation. It floors me. Why would we not have local participation on our board? We're more than happy to have that. Whether it should be the majority, I'm not sure about that. But we, of course, we'd have local participation because we really are very family oriented, and it's in our mission that we form partnerships with parents and community members. It's part of the mission of our school. So, that's all I wanted to say, is that we wouldn't consider doing anything else but that, and it doesn't require a law. We've never had to have laws to do what we believe is right for kids. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Can you state your address for the record as well, please?
673 Hunan Street, Northeast Palm Bay, 32907.
Thank you. Mr. Verge? Forgive me if I mispronounced the, okay. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, we're talking about the governing board, not the found, founding board. So, I, I would go with the majority. I was at a charter school the other day, and, and I think it's great that they would voluntarily say, we're going to put some local members on, on the board, but not all charters do that. They say, well, we'll have a conference call. We set up a conference phone in the room and, you know, the parent talks to the board member that's in Fort Lauderdale or whatever. So, I, I do think we need to push that a bit and, and call for local, local boards. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Cadel, before I pass the gavel, would you entertain a friendly amendment to your motion?
I have no problem amending my original motion to put in there that the majority of the board be Orange County residents.
Okay. The motion's been amended by Ms. Cadel. Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Flynn. So, I don't have any other speakers lined up. Where we're at now is to, the motion on the floor is to approve the superintendent's recommendation to grant a charter to Odyssey Charter Preparatory Academy, provided that a majority of the board, the local governing, or the governing board of that charter be Orange County residents. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any questions on that? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. All right, we are now on item 1605, which was formerly 16.04. And at this time, I need to recess our main meeting and call to order the Orange, a meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. Okay? The Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation is a nonprofit organization that exists to facilitate lease financing for school facilities. The leasing corporation is an organization separate from the school board of Orange County, Florida, the school board, with its own bylaws and corporate identification. The current member of the school board also serves as members of the board of directors of the leasing corporation. The officers of the corporation are elected based on the bylaws of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. The slate of officers recommended for the leasing corporation is President William Soblet, Vice President and Vice Chair of the School Board Secretary, Barbara, Dr. Barbara M. Jenkins, Treasurer, Richard L. Collins. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the recommended slate of officers.
Move the adoption of the recommended slate of officers.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
I will move the adoption of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated February 28th, 2012.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mrs. Robinson. And is there any discussion or debate? No, seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Show that motion adopted unanimously.
I will move the adoption, adoption of the consideration of resolution approving and authorizing the execution of amendment number one to Series 2010A ground lease and amended and restated Schedule 2010A in order to revise the list of Series 2010A facility sites in Series 2010A facilities encumbered under the lens of the Series 2010A ground lease and Schedule 2010A order to, a Schedule 2010A. That's it.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's seconded by Ms. Flynn. Is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Move the adjournment of the leasing corporation.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there any opposition to adjourning the meeting of the leasing corporation? All right, it's been seconded. And with that, with no opposition, we are adjourned and back into our regular meeting. Thank you, Ms. Cadel.
That is the hardest portion of this meeting to run.
That's actually the smoothest it's been.
Well, I felt your pain.
All right. Wow, I think we're almost at an end. Superintendent, I don't see any information items, any reports by you.
I only have one observation, Mr. Chairman. We are saddened but excited for Shirley Cowens. This is her last board meeting, one of the longest board meetings, but we certainly want to recognize her.
Well, and we get to celebrate with you tomorrow afternoon, I think, at West Orange. I think you're following in Rosita's footsteps because wasn't Rosita's retirement out there too? Okay, Bridget, when you retire, know that, that, that the practice in the West learning community is we go to West Orange's cafeteria for celebration. I know, but I won't be here when she retires. I'm liable to be 10 feet under by then.
Cowens, we hope you have a wonderful party tomorrow. You've certainly earned it tonight. It's good to know we sent you out with a bang. It wouldn't be a retirement without a marathon board meeting, so make you enjoy retirement even more. Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, thank you. I, I too, I really want to say that Shirley Cowens jumped in and just came in and hit the road and never stopped. But I really want to thank you for working and just stepping in under Dr. Rosita Riley and just coming in and doing all the things that you did to see that the schools were successful. I think we had very little that we needed to correct and move on after you came in. And you were on top of it, and I'm very grateful. It was just an honor and a pleasure to work with you. I think my most memorable moment of you is Frankis. You remember Frankis? That you were outstanding, and I think you've topped yourself. And so, to the board members and chairman, thank you so very much, and thank you for working with us. And we hope that this is not the end.
Amen. Ms. Moore?
I am pushing my button just to let you know I have a communications report.
Mrs. Robinson?
I have a different issue.
Okay. Ms. Cadel?
Actually, I just wanted to make, whoops, I just wanted to make an announcement whenever it's appropriate.
Okay. Well, Ms. Cowens, I'm sorry I'm going to miss your party tomorrow, but if I know you, it's going to be a party. So, have fun tomorrow. All right, we are now on reports by the school board attorney.
None at this time.
Oh, God bless you.
Yay!
You know, before we get too close to the end, I just want to recognize, we have one of our leadership class, Orange class members out there, and he has sat through the entire meeting, and I think that deserves a round of applause. Thank you. All right, we're on, before I go to policy level issues y'all would like to discuss, let me see if we have any committee reports. Budget, Ms. Cadel? You have a budget meeting coming up, don't you?
We had our first meeting on Monday, and we did set some meeting dates, and we will have our next meeting in January. It will be the fourth Monday of the month. And I have received, I've received copies of, of members accepting the new schedule of dates. So, we will be meeting through the end of April.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, communications?
Now, I'm going to start with an apology. I know it's 11 o'clock, but Ms. Putnam has sat here to help me with this, and it's 11. So, I won't belabor it, but I have a short little PowerPoint about the spruce up day. And, and I beg your indulgence, I know it's 11. Ms. Daryl's about to fall asleep. So, anyway, we wanted to, she's going, as fast as I go like this, she'll, she'll turn it to the next slide. So, I promise to not belabor. The spruce up goals, you know, we, we held this event a couple of weeks ago, and it was quite successful. And the goals were, as you can see, to clean up the campuses around the district, show appreciation for our taxpayer-funded facilities, and of course, to provide students with the opportunity to beautify their own campuses and that the high school students were able to get community service. Here's the list, I won't read them all, of all the participants for the Fall Spruce Up. Now, we have some pictures, they're just lovely. We have photographers, Moore and, and Putnam. And in that one picture, that man bending over is Principal Guthrie. So, and that's Ms. Pipkin. And I got to tell you, our own, Sherry Bobinski was probably leading the charge at Apoka Elementary School. And Mrs. Robinson, there's a picture for you of Edgewater. And, and Ms. Gould, there's Olympia High School.
Olympia High School football.
Yes, a very, as she says, a very handsome football team at Olympia High School. Hen Oaks and Jones, there's Ms. Jones, Mrs. Gordon, you'd be so proud of the work that they have done on their campus. Next, Piedmont Lakes and Lockhart. Lockhart had a very ambitious plan. I don't know, Mrs. Robinson, if you've been over there, because they really worked hard. This is my favorite picture. In fact, that's the picture of the young lady that was in the Sentinel with the story. She is just so endearing. And to see her right in the middle of, of the landscape pulling weeds is just precious. And... And, okay, there, oh, Zellwood, I didn't realize we had that picture. Yes, now, come to Zellwood, they have entertainment with their beautification, and I was out there today looking at the work they had done. This is what we have signed up for the spring, and I would just love any of your leadership with any more of your schools. I would like to see that triple. And I had a wonderful time. I had it all worked out. I hit five or six campuses that Saturday morning and went around, and I had my shears and made, asked my daughter if she noticed that half of the trees in the Apopka High School courtyard I trimmed myself. Of course, she didn't notice. But, and I guess that is, that would conclude my report. I'm sorry for doing this at this late hour, but I really wanted you to share in the excitement. And one final remark, I had posted it on Facebook, and there was an article in The Chief, and one of my sorority sisters, who is not here tonight, sent me an email and said, "I saw the kids out at Apopka Middle School working on the facility." I said, "That was the whole idea." And she was so excited to see these children out working on their own campus. So appreciate any more support you can give in the spring, and if all of us get out there, that would just be wonderful because we'd like to make the event grow and expand as we move in the future. And thank you, Mrs. Putnam, for sitting here till 11 o'clock.
I have another elementary school that can be added to that spruceup that did it, just last Saturday, Lake Como Elementary.
Wonderful.
Did a beautification day, too, so add them to the list. And I threw mulch at Rolling Hills for two hours on Saturday. I've never been so sore in my whole entire life.
Thank you.
And Arbor Ridge was cleaned up by the Southern Association of School, Student Government, Student Councils. It was their public service cleanup, and there were like 700 children there, or students there, who worked on the old University Ninth Grade Center to spruce it up. They did painting, they worked on the fence, so it didn't fall on October 27th, but it was a huge project that Principal R. Brewster oversaw because they hosted that group. So they can be added to the list also.
And I just added Blankner to my calendar, so good job. We'll be out there. Thank you. It's a great program, Mrs. Moore, thank you very much. All right, curriculum, Mr. Roach, anything on that? Okay. Legislative, Ms. Flynn?
No.
Central floor, School Board Coalition, Ms. Flynn?
No.
Actually, I think I attended no report.
Okay, thank you. FSBA, Mrs. Robinson?
Well, hopefully, we're all going to Tampa here at the very end of November after Thanksgiving break, so we'll all get, do a lot of fun things there and learn a lot more stuff.
Okay.
I have to say, I personally think it's a great program. Since I had to lead, line up the speakers and the sessions and stuff, I think it's great.
Community Action Board, Mrs. Gordon. Okay. Foundation, Mr. Roach?
They're still giving a lot of money to us.
All right. NSBA, anything on that, Mrs. Gordon?
Already given.
Okay. All right. Then I have a number of board members who want to make announcements or discuss issues. Mrs. Gordon? Did you have your button pushed? Is this an old one?
I'm going to push to go home.
Okay. Oh, okay, I may have just deleted somebody on accident, so, Mrs. Robinson?
Mr. Soblet, just, Leadership Orange is still going strong. I met the group at Meadow Woods Middle the other day. They were just delightful. Dylan says they're a fabulous enthusiastic group, and I think the next trip is out into Ms. Flynn's area, and the third, class number three is in class three. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Mrs. Robinson?
I just wanted to, and this isn't something we need to do a work session on, but I just want to make a comment and see what everybody thought about. I think we need to, I know we've put it off for a long time because of the budget crisis, updating our boardroom here. I think something that we need to consider when I, when I mention this is updating it for video conferencing. You know, it's so difficult when a board member calls in and so many things, they can't see what's happening here, we can't really see them, and I thought about it, how many times, Dr. Jenkins, do we do professional development here? Wouldn't it be nice if we didn't have to pay to fly the speaker here, if they could just be up on the, if we could have the capability of video conferencing? And I have to say, Mr. Rodriguez gave me this great idea, and so I thought I'd bring it to y'all's attention, that, oh, it is on the agenda.
Retreat agenda.
Oh, love it.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Never mind. Thank you, I was on a roll. So anyway, I'm glad we're going to discuss it Thursday night. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cato?
I just want to remind everyone and thank everyone who may be still watching this that tomorrow is teaching, and it's a partnership. And thanks to everyone who's going to schools and sharing their expertise. It's a great opportunity to get our students involved in different careers, or, in my case, I'll be talking to avid students at Legacy Middle School, and I'll be talking about discipline issues that come in front of us without putting any names, but please make good decisions. And so thanks to everyone who's participating in teaching tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Cato, and I'm actually doing it, and since it's 11:12, I was going to go home and prepare for an hour, an hour and a half, and I'm sitting here wondering if I can wing it somehow. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. I've got one, too, at 7:20. Hey, OCPS has teamed up with UCF for the last football game, the last home football game, which is Saturday, November 24th at 12:00 p.m. Special tickets, $20 a ticket, and a portion of that ticket goes back to our homeless services department. So, go Knights, let's all go to the game. I'm going. So $20, we're in the end zone, but we can all have a party.
All right. Go Knights. All right.
Well, and if you could, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, if you guys could pass it on to your email list or let people know, that'd be great.
All right. I know after the retreat, we won't see y'all. We do have a rule development workshop, let me just point out, on December 4th. Should be, I think, a fairly quick one. Then we have a work session on December 6th on the Philanthropic Strategic Plan. And we have another rule development workshop that I think board members will really want to attend, if you can all make it, on Stadium Naming Rights and on Charter District on December 13th. So I handed out that list. Last thing is, I've handed out the proposed agenda for the retreat on Thursday, and I would just like to ask each board member to me, and I know we all get something different out of the retreat, but the part that I personally enjoy the most and that I look forward to the most is that room in numero uno. What are your, what's your vision? What are your priorities? If you could change anything? And we did this last year and the year before, so please put your thinking caps on and come prepared to talk about what your agenda is so we can try to make it happen and any changes you'd like to have made. And then you'll see also there, we've tried to address and all the logistical issues of just the meetings, then some things about our internal board policies and some legal issues that have to be addressed. So we've got a full itinerary for that retreat. If you've never been to Hugh, and I think, or not Hugh, Urban Rethink, it's right next to Hugh on the corner of Central and Summerlin and downtown Orlando. You can park in that parking garage there, Central and Summerlin, Thornton Park, Mrs. Gordon, at Thornton Park Development. But what I would make a suggestion, just because I'm down there all the time, that time in the evening and day, it is usually very, very easy to find parking on the side streets, Eola. It's not a, late enough in the night where all those spots are taken. So if I were you, it's up to you, but if you want to be easy, you can park in the garage. If you want to be frugal, like I try to do, just park on the street right across from Urban Rethink on Eola there. Yes. You know, I will, Ms. McGill, can we get Mrs. Gordon directions rather than, I mean, I can walk you through after the meeting if you'd like me to, Mrs. Gordon, or Ms. McGill? Okay, good. All right. All right. Is there anything else for the good? Ms. Flynn, did you punch your button, or is this an old one?
Old one.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned.